We're gonna start shortly.
Kiva's everyone on?
Who was that?
I was asking if everyone is on, if everyone is on. The panelists.
Hi, I am on, this is Antonia Fleming.
Okay, great.
Hey, Condon.
Hi.
I think everyone is on.
Um, we're not live on Facebook as yet.
Yes, we are.
You're asking for telling.
No, I don't stay on my side, I don't want to look again, I'm on HFA's page.
I think we are.
We are, let's begin.
Okay, so we are on Facebook. Good evening, everyone, good evening, good evening. And welcome. Uh, my name is Kiva Muller, I'm the Communications Manager here at VIHFA. Uh, like I said, welcome to the Virgin Islands Housing Finance Authority's a public meeting to provide updates on the Citizen Participation Plan. And the CDBG, that's the Community Disaster, Community Development Black Grant Disaster Recovery, I'm sorry. Action Plan Substantial Amendment Number Two. As, uh, so we are going to conduct this meeting, um, in two separate Citizen Participation Plan Updates. What's, once that is in complete, we will open up the meetings of questions and feedback. And then we'll move on to the Action Plan, uh, portion. So with me, I have our Executive Director Darrell Griffith, who will bring some opening remarks, and then we'll get started.
Hi, good evening, everyone, as Kiva said, I'm Darrell Griffith, Executive Director of the Virgin Islands Housing Finance Authority. The VIHFA administers the Territories Funds for many programs you are familiar with. Um, the Home Ownership Program and Public and Homeless Services. Most recently, VIHFA assumed the responsibility of administering a portion of the disaster funding that comes from the federal government. The laws governing the program requires VIHFA to involve the community. Those of who said programs will, uh, who, programs will directly benefit. Will provide information on the post-use funds to you and, and the public, and in turn will give your comments and feedback. And your comments or feedback are, are vital to this, this process so that we know that we're actually addressing the needs of the community. The VIHFA Citizen Participation Plan is a formal document and guide to how we engage the public. It should be updated every 10 years, so we are here today to provide information on the changes we've made. The last time it has been updated was, um, 2010. In addition, when funded more than a set percentage of amount changes or or change of, that people benefit, benefit from the use of the funds, it is called a substantial amendment and must follow the public participation process. If changes are administrative in nature, such as policy clarification, or X typographical errors on a minimal amounts of funds is adjusted, HUD and other publics are notified of the administrative change five days prior to the changes taking effect. The Citizen, Citizen Participation Plan Updates details on the type of amendments and actions that are required.
Thank you, thank you. So the purpose of the Citizen Participation Plan, like Director Griffin mentioned earlier, is to inform and engage citizens on all HUD-funded programs. We also want to report progress of projects and the program outcomes. And finally, so a little background, uh, we have four federal programs, uh, that are annually allocated. So it's a regular CDBG, Community Development Black Grant, ESG, Emergency Solutions Grants, Home Investment Partnership Program, Home, and the Housing Trust Fund. Like I said, these block grant programs are annually allocated in the US and are not dependent on disasters. So that brings us to disaster funding. When the President declares that a disaster has occurred in the Territory and Congress passes legislation with funding to address the disaster's impact, the Government of the Virgin Islands is required to involve the public in determining how the money is to be used. So VIHFA has received CDBG Disaster Recovery and Mitigation Funds for the 2017 Hurricanes. And we've also recently received, uh, CDBG and ESG funds for the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, so what does this have to do with the Citizen Participation Plan? Well, it's really a formality, and these new funding programs must clearly be outlined in the plans that we have to engage the public. So the three major changes and updates, uh, that we have in the Citizen Participation Plan is new language about the disaster funding that I just mentioned, and the increased use of social media as a means for engaging with the public. Uh, we're also live on Facebook, so this is one. And 10 years ago, we, we, we didn't have as much social media, uh, applications or sites as we do now, so we wanted to include that. And a formal process for engaging the public during emergency situations, uh, much like the public health pandemic that's going on now. So the process this evening, uh, and for the next 30, well, not next 30 days, it's, it's gonna be over on October 3rd. It's taking place because we're updating the plan. The full plan and summary, uh, are located on the website and it's available for review. Our website is VIHFA.gov, and you can click on the Disaster Recovery tab, and it'll take you to the Citizen Participation. General feedback on what you think of the plan. If you have suggestions on how we can better engage the public, let us know. If you agree with our plan, uh, feel free to leave a comment stating so as well. We really want to, want you to tell us how to engage you in what we're doing. So that's pretty much the updates that we have for the Citizen Participation Plan. And at this time, uh, we'll take comments uh, and feedback that you have. If you are on the line, you will have four minutes to complete your oral comments, or you can type them in the chat room that's here, and questions will be answered, uh, if time allows. But what we also want to do is, uh, we were formally documenting the questions that you guys have. So some will be answered now, and some will be incorporated into the document and answered at a later time. So I am going to start my timer, I'm gonna give it two minutes before we move on to the Action Plan Amendment. So if you have any comments, uh, feel free to unmute yourself and ask them. And this is in reference to the Citizen Participation Plan I just mentioned. We just spoke about.
Good evening, I'd like to speak up if that's possible.
Sure.
Okay, um, my name is Barbara Walsh, and I'm with the Virgin Islands Trail Alliance. We're a new group, but we're looking at, um, ways we can connect people through pedestrian infrastructure across the island, especially with all the new road projects. So we're looking at a lot of transportation types of things. And, um, one of my concerns with emergency situations and, um, engaging the public is if there should be some kind of, um, major problem with the refinery. And I've tried to bring this up in other meetings, um, I know that, you know, say for instance, VITIME is generally concerned with natural disasters and a natural disaster could affect the refinery, and then you have to evacuate a lot of people, um, in a, in a safe and timely fashion. And we all know that trying to get around Lime Tree at, you know, in rush hour is, is crazy, so. Um, and also, I do know that the Department of, uh, Planning and Natural Resources has a new app to be able to report any kind of, um, situations that may happen around the refinery. But all of this in the broader context of being some kind of telephone tree or neighborhood, kind of system where people can report problems and also be notified of situations, and also developing a transportation plan for evacuating around lime trees. So that is my big concern, and I'm not sure if this is the right place for it, but I wanted to speak up.
Thank you for that, that's a, a valid concern, and it's actually something that would be more in line with our Community Development Grant Mitigation Grant, which will, will start having, um, these type of hearings for, um, public outreach for next month. So would love to keep you in the loop, so if you could make a comment at, at that one too as well. HUD has given, um, HUD has, uh, has allocated 774 million for the CDBG mitigation. This is the disaster recovery, but that, that's definitely a great thing for the mitigation. So we'll keep you in the loop, and if you don't mind, um, if you are on, um, on Zoom, if you just send your email in so we can, um, we can send you an email when that's coming to as well, so to make sure you don't miss it.
Okay, shall I put that in the chat?
That's, that's fine, is that fine, Ms. Muller?
Yep, sure thing.
Thank you so much.
And I told, um, off-subject, but I told Education and Public Works to contact Trail Alliance for a trail that we want to do.
Okay, awesome, so I'll give you my email right now.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Do you have any other comments or questions about the Citizen Participation Plan Updates?
And you can go to the next slide and tell them where they can send their feedback.
Sure thing, so hearing none, uh, if you have questions or comments, feedback, uh, after this live, uh, presentation, feel free to email them at CDBGDR@VIHFA.gov, or St. Croix office, it'll come directly to me at 100 Lagoon Complex Suite Number Four, St. Croix VI, zip code 00804. All feedback will be captured, and any unaddressed comments will be addressed in writing when we submit, uh, the plan. So we're moving right along to the Substantial Amendment Number Two. So joining me for updates on the CDBGDR Action Amendment are our Chief Disaster Recovery Officer David Martin and our CDBGDR Director Antonia Fleming. Welcome, welcome.
Hey, good night, everyone.
So the goals for today's public hearing, uh, we want to update you on the current status of CDBGDR programs. And if I get, uh, caught up on CDBG, I'm just gonna refer to it as Disaster Recovery or DR programs. We're also going to announce the new allocation for infrastructure unmet needs. And then finally, we want to gather your feedback and comments. Um, and I want to spend a few seconds here, uh, similar to what we mentioned earlier, uh, this, on the Citizen Participation Plan. We want to either hear yay, the proposed use of funds are on the right track, or nay, we need to revisit some critical areas, or just provide your honest feedback on the intended use of funds. Your commentary and feedback will be addressed here and formally sent off to HUD. And it's really a temperature check from the public on how we are handling the disaster recovery funds. So really, really, really want to hear from you. And I'm gonna hand it over to Antonia, so she can, uh, explain the disaster recovery process. You're muted, Antonia.
I was, and I had a little difficulty tying it down, I'm sorry about that. So thank you, Kiva, I appreciate that. So managing the disaster recovery funding is an ongoing process. Funding can be adjusted as, uh, then, um, priorities are identified or as needs in our community has changed. The first action plan was done back in 2000, was approved back in July of 2018, and that brought on a total of $242 million, um, to the Territory. Um, but the, uh, the trans two, which we amended, which we amended back in 2019, we, at that time, we engaged the public in a different setting. So right now, everything is virtual, but at that time, it was in person. And at that time, we did the same thing, similar, we came and we showed you information about the action plan and the proposed changes, and we also asked for your feedback. So in this discussion, we're also gonna be giving you some information on an additional funding. A total of $53 million was awarded to the Territory for unmet needs and infrastructure. So this Amendment Number Two that we're talking about tonight is to discuss that along with some other information. Um, the Amendment Number Two will also allocate funds based on the priorities and in compliance with the condition of the award that HUD has given us in the Territory. So I'm gonna give you some quick updates on what we have been doing. Before we get into the updates though, I want to be able to explain the terminology of what you're seeing on the slide. Subrecipients are government, and can be government entities. They can be agencies, they can be nonprofits, that receive funds from us, from us, VIHFA, to carry out a specific project. We begin with a capacity assessment to review their internal controls and policies for managing the federal funds we're gonna give them. Once the capacity assessment is completed, uh, we develop what we call a subrecipient agreement. And from that document, we can apply the funds for the specific projects. After HFA has reviewed your, your application for those projects, we develop a project agreement, and we issue you a notice to proceed. And I'm gonna give you some examples of the projects we're looking at right now. So many of you have heard about our housing program, the InVision Program, which contains, um, the homeowner program and the rental program. By this amendment, we're seeking, um, public comments in increasing the funding for those, well, for the homeowner program. Right now, with the first allocation and the second allocation, we have a total of $50 million in that line item. By this amendment, we would like to increase that funding to $150 million. This would allow us at HFA to fund much more needed homeowners that need the work on their damaged homes. Also under our housing program, we have the New Housing and Infrastructure Program. This funding has a total of $70 million. And this program, it matches and it mimics our traditional HFA homeownership program. I'll give you some ideas on the projects and locations we're looking at. So under that program, we're gonna be looking at developing Estates Solitude, um, Mount Pleasant on St. Croix, Estate Fortuna on St. Thomas, just to give you an idea of where our developments are. Also on our housing, we're gonna call them buckets, under our, our housing bucket, we have what we call Public and Affordable Housing. And that program has been funded to a total of $81.5 million. There are several entities underneath this project. The first one is Megan's Bay Junction Phase Two, that is on St. Thomas for a total of $3.5 million, and is currently under construction, uh, please free to drive around the area and look at the progress. Also under that category, we're working with Croiville Preservation Associates on St. Croix.
Should this, should the, um, the, the slide change?
We're still, we're still on the same slide.
Okay.
So this is just giving them, the, the, some updates on what we're working on. So Croiville Preservation on St. Croix is another one of the applicants we're working with, their developer. And they have a tune of $6.9 million, and is a rehabilitation of about 82 and three-bedroom apartments on St. Croix. Housing Authority, our sister agency, they have several projects that we're working with them on. Walter Iamhage, Williams Delight, Duno Redevelopment Phase One. Uh, we're looking hopefully to receive something for Ralph Dishebert, um, development. And any other housing authority initiative that, you know, was damaged or impacted from the hurricane. Also in this amendment, uh, we're gonna change some things that were in our housing program, and we created a new sector called Public Services and Public Facilities. So Public Services allowed us to serve programs that service the public and provide a service to the public. That program will be funded at $500,000. For the public facility component of that program, I'm gonna tell you, we're looking at a couple, um, entities. Right now, we have before the University of the Virgin Islands. They're developing a multi-purpose complex that was served not only as a public outreach facility, but also as a shelter. They are being funded right now for $5 million, and this is only the initial phase of the project. The remaining funds will move into our mitigation funds. Also included under that category, um, we have for you, to tell you about human services, and they're developing two projects, one on St. Croix, one on St. Thomas. The Herbert Gray Complex has a tune of about $7.5 million to make some very major and massive improvements to the Herbert Gray Facility. Similar project on St. Thomas with Queen Louise, and a similar thing will be done, massive and major improvements to that facility on St. Thomas. So that wraps up the housing component, but housing is not the only thing that we do at HFA. Uh, we also do infrastructure programs, and I'm gonna tell you about them. We have three main components under infrastructure. We have a project that is called Non-Federal Share, uh, was called MATCH for short, is for Disaster, um, Disaster Recovery Program. Initially, under our first and second allocation, we had about $120 million allocated to that project. But because there's a total of over $5 billion of disaster-related work in the Territory from FEMA, our DR monies will be used as a match, a 10% match to those FEMA, FEMA-type projects. So we weren't able to actually match it one for one, but we got as close as we could, and we're making available to all the match projects $430 million. Under infrastructure as well, we have a project called Repair Resilience. Uh, Repair Resilience, we're working with Department of Public Works, we're working with WAPA, um, Waste Management, just to name a few. For Public Works, we are currently working on two road projects for them. One on St. Thomas and one on St. Croix. For St. Croix, we have the Northside Highway Development. I think that is what, 6.5 mile-long highway that's, um, on the north side of St. Croix. We also have the Duno Bypass Improvement Project on St. Thomas, and that is a two-mile stretch of land on St. Thomas as well. A little history about this project. A little history about this project. The initial funding that will be under disaster recovery is only for design services. Because design for road project can be extremely long, we have separated a project into two phases. The first phase is under disaster recovery, and the major component of the repairs for those two roads will be under the mitigation funding. And that is because the fund, the project itself is really a resilient project. It will incorporate bringing our utility lines underground, a lot of resilient measures to make the, the road much more efficient and effective. So it's a partnership between the two funding sources. We also have some waterline project from WAPA that we're working on, on both St. Thomas and St. John. And really, there are too numerous to mention at this time because it includes an excessive list. For Waste Management, we also have the Transfer Station on both island districts as well. So moving on to our, I'm sorry, before I move on from infrastructure, I forgot the most important project. Our Electrical Power System and Enhancement and Improvement Program. That is by this amendment number two, we would like to bring on a total of $95 million to the Department of WAPA. WAPA has a project that they're currently working on, and I'm sure most of you have heard about it. It is to provide a total of 40-megawatt power generators to the island of St. Thomas. And that is for the Randolph Harley Power Plant. So again, moving away from the infrastructure, I'm going to talk about the Economic Revitalization Programs that we have. We have the Port and Airport Project. Under the Port and Airport, we have Shelter Maria Harbor dredging projects. There's actually three harbors that will be dredged from this with Port Authority. But under Disaster Recovery, we have one. The other two will be moved into mitigation. The Shelter Maria Harbor dredging project is funded at a total of $23 million. The project would dredge approximately 255 cubic yards of material from the harbor. And it is to, this is to allow the quantum-sized cruise ships the opportunity to come into our harbors. Also, under Tourism Industry Support Program, this is a tune of $10 million. We're working with Department of Tourism to provide them funds to do a tourism marketing campaign. Also, some of the money would be used to work with Department of Labor. So Labor has some funds, also economic revitalization. They have a total of $17 million, and it's for several projects that would allow Labor to do Skills for Tomorrow and On-the-Job Training Programs. They would like to train about 500 individuals in the territory on various skills, whether it is hard skills, soft skills, construction skills. And they have a setup of different skills that would, you know, make, make our residents better marketable in the territory. The last project I want to talk about is EDA. EDA has the Vision 2040 Plan. And it's a Long-Term Strategy Economic Recovery and Redevelopment Plan that looks at the economy, the growth of the economy in the territory, job creation, wealth generation. As, and it also measures the deliverables of the 20, you know, 2040 plan throughout a couple of years. So Kiva, I know it was long, but I'm sorry, I just had to tell the public what we're working on before we moved on.
Antoinette, I think.
I'm sorry, Mr. Martin, you were saying something. I didn't hear you.
No, that's fine. I was just saying that's an excellent update for the territory, but I have a question.
Yes.
If I own a business and I want to improve my facility, can I apply for these funds?
So I can jump in there, Mr. Martin. Let me put back on my video. Here I am. So there is no Economic Revitalization Project that allows assistance for individual businesses under the current plan. However, please be mindful that your facility must have been impacted by the 2017 hurricanes. But with your own. Well, what we can do is, is look at your concerns about this. And we can address it in another amendment, if that's something that is of a big concern to business owners in the territory. So that's a good thing that we can do. Whatever needs may arise, we can go in and make amendments too.
Thank you.
That, Kiva is correct. So moving on to our next slide. This is just, I want to share with the public how the allocation is broken down. So the amount of CDBG funding is provided to the territory in what you see before you totals about $2 billion. The funds have been announced, like I have said before, in a couple of separate allocations. We call them tranches. Each tranche must be separately approved by HUD before the dollars are, are available and spent in the territory. Tranche one and tranche two have already been approved. Tranche two A, this is for the $53 million I just mentioned. And this again is a new allocation that HUD granted us. And that was just announced back in January, and this amendment number two defines how the funds will be spent. Once the amendment is approved, HUD will issue a grant agreement to the territory and the funds will be available for the, for drawdown. So tranche number three highlighted in yellow is the mitigation tranche. It has a separate allocation and a separate action plan would be developed. Actually, we're working on that action plan right now. And although it's not part of this discussion, I think Mr. Griffith mentioned it before. We will be coming back to you, the public, so that we can share with you what we have developed thus far. Moving on to the next slide.
Before we move on to the next slide, Antoinette, I have a question for you.
Great.
The amendment talks about funding the Randolph Harley Power Plant in St. Thomas, which does not generate power in St. Croix. What funding is provided to address the electrical grid in St. Croix?
That's a very good question. The amendment moved funds around to fully fund the generation unit for the Randolph Harley Power Plant on St. Thomas, yes. But it does not represent all the funds allocated to address the electrical grid in the territory. CDBGDR and CDBG Midfunds will fund other, and I'm sorry, not other, but various power and water projects with WAPA. So this is only the tip of the iceberg, and this is just the beginning. We are working with WAPA to bring much more projects online. All right. So the chart before you displays the allocation awarded to the territories through tranches, like I mentioned. The Initial Disaster Recovery Fund allocated to the territory in 2017 makes up only 13% of the total allocation. So let me repeat that. Tranche one is only 13% of the total allocation. Mitigation and electrical grid projects are also identified on this slide, so you can see those. Tranche two is about 41% of the total allocation as well. So what I want to also tell everyone is this does not represent the total funding for the territory for the 2017 hurricanes. This that you're seeing before you is, it is only CDBGDR and mitigation amounts. FEMA funds, which is now close to $5 billion, is an addition, is in addition to this amount. VITIMA and ODR administers the FEMA funding for the territory, and we work closely with both entities. Moving on to the amendment budget. So this is just, again, another breakdown showing the increase in funding. The percentage of funds for the program outlined in the amendment in this reference in this slide, in this, you can see there was a substantial increase in our housing program. We went from 22% to about 33%. Infrastructure went from, actually, infrastructure went down a little slightly. They had 63% before, and infrastructure went down to 57%. And economic revitalization remained the same percentage. So moving on, I would like to introduce you, Mr. David Martin, and he will take it from here.
Thank you, Antoinette. So let's talk on met need. Funding that's provided after a disaster event is never enough to cover all the damages. And HUD uses the term on met need. It is the difference between the amount of the damage and the amount of funding available. It's a little math problem. For instance, if the project damage, if the project has a damage assessment of $4 million and FEMA and insurance will cover $2 million, that leaves an on met need of $2 million. In addition to the two disaster recovery tranches for $242 million and $779 million and the $774 million awarded for mitigation, HUD announced an additional $53 million that is to be used for on met needs for infrastructure projects and repairs. This new $53 million, which we are calling Tranche Two A, can be used for roads, public facilities, waste management, and water and sewer projects. Because it's, because it is for infrastructure on met needs and not housing or economic revitalization, the funds are being added to the non-federal share or match program. I'm trying to turn my slides as well. So these are some of the eligible, eligible projects under the infrastructure program. It's important to note that the power generation projects have specific requirements in addition to a separate funding allocation. The Randolph Harley Power Generation Project, for example, is being funded in Tranche One. Future power generation projects will be funded through CDBDR and CDB Mid. And once the electric grid tranche is released, HFA and WAPA will work closely with HUD to ensure the projects awarded meet all the special criteria for power generation projects. Increased funding for housing. So housing is one of our highest priorities for recovery. Funding for the housing sector has significantly increased. To allow more clients to be served under the homeowner program, the funding has increased from $60 million to $150.2 million. And due to the high demand for homeownership, this program has increased from $50 million to $70 million. The rental program remains the same at $25 million. Due to the on met needs in affordable housing, the Public and Affordable Housing Program funding has increased from $72 million to $81.5 million.
I've heard for the InVision program, there's a 51% LMI requirement. Could you explain?
Yeah, I can answer that question. LMI is referred to Low and Moderate Income Benefit. The CDBG program was established to assist individuals and households that typically earn income less than the area's median income. HUD established the income limits, which includes the area median income. And that is based on the number of members in a household. So for example, if there's a household that consists of four individuals, the income cannot exceed $46,400, and this is based on HUD's current income limits. And these limits typically change every year.
Right on. Thank you, Brittany.
So let's continue with the discussion of the Public Services and Facilities. These activities were previously included in the housing program in both the Action Plan and Amendment One. This amendment creates a separate sector dedicated to public services and public facilities. Public facilities are defined as publicly owned facilities or buildings owned by nonprofits or agencies that are open to the public or serve persons with special needs. Examples of publicly owned facilities are libraries, recreational facilities, parks, or playgrounds. Examples of buildings owned by nonprofits or agencies are homeless or domestic violence shelters, nursing or group homes, or health clinics. Public services are activities undertaken to provide employment, training, childcare, health services, substance abuse treatment, and counseling. Education programs, fair housing counseling, services for the senior citizens and others. Emergency shelters are a priority as well. And in so that residents have a place to safely ride out disaster events. Homes for the Age are also a priority, providing a safe environment for our elders. And then finally, facilities where clients can access critical public services, such as food banks, homeless services, youth programs, and senior services are eligible under public facility and service programs. So here's a breakdown of the programs and the funding. You can see that the infrastructure funding exceeds $570 million. This includes non-federal share, the non-federal share program with roughly $5 billion in FEMA funding for the, the work being done. The VI share for many of the projects is 10% of the total. And the non-federal share is not just for infrastructure projects. It includes some of the housing projects as well, as well, excuse me, as a step program. And 10% of that $5 billion is $500 million.
I have a question. How is mitigation funding new to the territory? We had mitigation projects here before, so how is it new to the territory? Kiva, can you answer that?
Sure thing. I'm actually going to get into that right now. But mitigation is brand new to the territory and definitely brand new to HUD. DR is something that they've always been into, but mitigation is fresh for everyone. So it's a work in progress, and we're working closely with HUD to make sure that we make good use of, of the funds. So the mitigation funds that people may have seen before, heard of before here in the territory, those are granted under FEMA Hazard Mitigation Programs. And FEMA is an agency under the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. And by VITIMA and the Office of Disaster Recovery, they administer all FEMA funds. So CDBG funds are administered by HFA, and they're granted by HUD. So it's just two different funding sources. They may seem similar in their intended use, but they serve a, a different population in, in a sense. FEMA doesn't really care about your income, whereas HUD, the focus is serving low and moderate income populations. So getting into mitigation, over the past few months, VIHFA has invited you guys to participate in the mitigation action plan project, process. Mitigation funding has a different criteria than DR. Been allocated to all 2017 grant entities. As we said earlier, DR must have a direct tie to the storms. But for mitigation projects, must have components that prevent future losses or mitigate against impacts of future storms, assisting the territory in becoming more resilient. So some projects that contain components of both, some projects contain components of both disaster recovery with a tie to the storm and mitigation preventing losses in future disaster events. So mitigation projects address what FEMA likes to call community lifelines, and that's what you see on the screen here. So it's safety, food and water, food, water, and shelter, health and medical, energy, communication, transportation, and hazardous materials. So some examples of potential mid projects, and I say potential because they're still drafting the action plan about how those funds will be used. But some potential projects could, could be housing redevelopments, infrastructure, roads, like Antoinette mentioned before. At the road project with CPW, the actual construction phase will be funded under mitigation. And also waste management. We have, we, we, we talk a lot about the landfills on both islands. And we, you could possibly, we could possibly use mitigation funds. and we could possibly, we could possibly use mitigation funds to address all of the landfill issues here. So we have a new, we have some good news here at VIHFA CDBGDR, and it's a new deadline that we have. Given the unprecedented pandemic that we're currently experiencing and the restrictions in place, HUD has provided a year extension deadline for expending all of CDBGDR funds, and this was granted across the board for all grantees. So initially, when the territory executed its grants agreement in 2018, it was given a six-year expenditure deadline, which will bring us to 2024. And due to the pandemic, it was extended to 2025. However, HUD has also given grantees an opportunity to request one additional year for the expenditure deadline. So therefore, we will be submitting a request for the additional year, which will bring us to 2026. So I also wanted, I mentioned the pandemic COVID-19 as a reason for an extension. So I'm just going to throw the question out. Can CDBGDR funds be used to address COVID-19 impacts?
Hi, Kiva. No, CDBGDR funds must have a direct tie to the 2017 hurricanes. However, VIHFA is the recipient of $3.5 million in COVID funding, which under the CARES Act, for emergency sheltering grants, housing for persons with AIDS, and CDBG programs. So the community must be mindful that this money is not commingled with the DR funding, and it is solely for CDBG.
Thank you, Leslie. And if you guys were with us from the beginning, when I was talking about the citizen participation plan, those funds are actually outlined in our plan now. So we have, it's called CV for COVID, so CDBG CV and ESG CV. So we've arrived at the end, and we want to hear from you. If you have questions, comments, concerns, please enter your name or any affiliation in the chat room. If you, and if you want to make a verbal comment, you have four minutes to do so. We will be heard on a first come, first served basis, and I'll just allow you guys to unmute your mics if you have anything that you wanted to say. We will try to address the comments and questions now, but if it's something that we that would require some more context, then we will address it in our documents or reach out to you on a sidebar. So we're going to open the floor up now. Remember that the public comment period has been open from September 3rd. It's going to close October 3rd. So feel free to submit your comments to the CDBGDR email, and that's cdbgdr@vihfa.gov, or mail it to me, and I'll get it in. I'm at 100 Lagoon Complex, Suite 4, St. Croix, BI, zip code 00804. But right now, it's an opportunity to state your oral comments, and I will let you guys have it. Please unmute your mics. Go right ahead.
Okay, I have two questions. This is Barbara Walsh again, and I know that your plans are already underway, and it sounds very comprehensive and everything. I just have a specific question on the Charlotte Amalia dredging. It says to allow for quantum ships. Now, since COVID, do you think that we will be getting the quantum ships back in or to reconsider? And then the other question on the WAPA action plan, is there any?
Ms. Walsh, we lost the second part of your question. Can you repeat, please?
The question was in regards to the WAPA plan, if there's solar or renewable energy in the plan. And
Go ahead. Mr. Rivers, you want me to go ahead and respond to her question, or you want to take it?
We can take it then. For the quantum class ships, the Department of Public Works, not Public Works, the Port Authority still believes that the cruise ship industry will one day start sailing, and they will still start, they will still use the quantum class ships. And they want the territory to use this period where they don't have any activity happening to actually be able to dredge, dredge the waters now instead of waiting for when it is fully active.
Okay, thank you.
And then for the WAPA solar, Mrs. Fleming, do you want to answer that, or you want me to keep going?
I could take it, and if I miss anything out, you can gladly fill in. So like I have said before in the presentation, WAPA has identified several projects to us that are upcoming in subsequent funding with us. So I cannot exactly tell you when they're going to bring on the solar, but it is in the work, it is in their discussions.
Okay, thank you very much.
I want to read a question that we have in the chat. When will more houses be approved for construction due to the hurricane? When will more houses be approved for construction due to the hurricane?
I'll take that. We have two. And I'm not sure which program they're speaking of, but I'll address both programs that are constructing homes. We currently have the Envision Program, which is constructing homes, and the team is working diligently with our construction manager, Armand, and our intake horn to process those through so that we can repair more homes that were damaged by the hurricane. And also VIHFA, as its main course of business, constructs new homes. We have active new home construction happening right now in St. Croix at a number of Mount Pleasant and Bon Esperance, and subdivision plants being finalized for for Sommetude in St. Croix, in St. Thomas. We have construction happening at Whispering Hills, and a lot more construction stated for RFP to be posed out in November. In St. Thomas as well, in Fortuna, we also have infrastructure work being done right now in Fortuna, for 57 home community site that's being planned, and it's actively under construction for the infrastructure in which we have to put in the roads, the electricity, and everything else, the sidewalks before home construction can begin.
Hi, this is Brittany. We have a question in the comment section from Ms. Sharon Cauldron. She asks, could you please tell us if Route 10 Centerline Road rebuild on St. John is part of any of these programs?
Mr. Griffith, at the moment, right now, we do know we're working with WAPA, and I'm not familiar with the route numbers. So I may have to come back and call her separately to respond to her question.
Is that a road project for Public Works?
That one is on St. John Route, kind of St. John.
It's a road project, right?
Yes.
We'll have to, we'll put a response back with all of the questions when we get a response from Department of Public Works on that one.
And Sharon, can you do the same thing as Ms. Walsh, put your email address in the chat? So I can make sure, be able to reach back out to you.
So I was, this is Kiva here. I did some radio outreach yesterday, and one question that I thought was very interesting came up, and I'll repeat it here. So our listeners and viewers can hear. It was mentioned that Port Authority has outlined a project to dredge the Charlotte Amalia Harbor. So I want to know what about the Schooner Bay Channel in St. Croix?
Very good question, Kiva, and I could probably answer that question. The Charlotte Amalia Harbor Dredging Project is funded by the VI Port Authority. It has a direct tie to the hurricane. In addition to extensive structural damages, the navigational waterway entering the Charlotte Amalia Harbor area, for which VIPA is responsible for maintaining, experienced a high level of sediment disruption and channel encroachment. Unfortunately, with Schooner Bay Channel, it is more of an economic revitalization project for the tourism opportunities in Christianstown, so we were not able to put it under the DR program. Disaster recovery, that is. St. Croix could potentially, that project could potentially be addressed with our mitigation funds. There's those do not have to have a direct tie to the hurricane. So it will come in, but it will come in at a later point in time with midfunding.
Also, Antoinette, I was looking at someone ask a question in terms of something that Kiva mentioned on the radio yesterday. And how are these funds being used to address homeless lists in the Virgin Islands? So Desiree, do you have some information on that that you could provide for us?
Yes, I do. With this amendment number two, we've introduced the public services and facilities sector, which includes government agencies such as Department of Human Services, Department of Health, and it also includes nonprofits that provide homeless care and intervention services to our community. With these, with that funding, we'll be able to apply, or those organizations will be able to apply for funding for both their facilities and the kind of services that they provide for the homeless community.
Thank you.
I also have a question. How much funding is set aside for housing in the CDBG mitigation funding? Mr. Martin, can you answer that?
Absolutely. We'll be setting aside funds for housing in mitigation. That's a fact. As there is a housing crisis that's presently plaguing the territory, and we're projecting over $193 million to set aside for housing. These funds will comprehensively rehabilitate and reconstruct approximately 3,000 aging and functionally obsolete public housing units. And a lot of these are more than 50 years old.
So I'm monitoring our Facebook feed for comments. It just popped, it just popped up. And Sheila, she called my name, so I'm addressing it. She listened to our radio show yesterday, and she said she didn't quite get the information on facilities and staff or the homelessness on the radio. So can I repeat the answer? So I'm just going to go back in there, and I just let her know it's similar to, it's the same exact answer that Desiree gave. So in this, Sheila, if you're hearing me, I see your comments. I'm going to respond. Early in the presentation, we mentioned the amendment two, and it's the introduction of the public services and facilities sector. We also mentioned that previously, before the amendment, it was under housing, but we found the need for it to be a separate entity on its own. So that's what it is in this amendment number two, the public services and facilities sectors, government agencies and nonprofits that provide homeless care and intervention services be able to apply for funding for both their facilities and services they provide. Facilities is not limited to homeless services alone. There could be any public facility. It could be domestic violence shelters, a soup kitchen, food bank, anything that will directly benefit the public. So do we have any other questions, comments for anyone on the line? And I'm also, I would like to mention, Antoinette spoke about the road projects that Department of Public Works is undertaking with CDBGDR funds. The two major ones, they've already got the first notice to proceed. And when I was on the radio, it was, we had some callers that wanted a visual of what that looks like. So the Dunlop bypass that's in St. Thomas, and it's actually going to be just about two miles of road. And then in St. Croix, the North Side Highway, it's about six and a half miles, and it takes you from oh, I guess around the entrance to going to Salt Riverside, all the way up to Pueblo on the east side, going into Christianstown. So the St. Croix Road, so 6.5 miles, and in St. Thomas, Dunlop bypass, about two miles, and we won't see construction on that until, Antoinette, correct me if I'm wrong, the later letter end of 2021, 2022?
That sounds about right.
Right. Because right now, they're doing the ANE, environmental review stuff?
No, design services.
Design, I'm sorry. Thanks.
I got you.
Kiva, you talked about the roads and the location. Someone in the comment asked if the back roads in Frederickstown will get fixed. Is that part of the North Side Road?
That's not a part of North Side, the North Side project. But Antoinette, help me out. Do we have other road projects that will possibly be coming online?
Oh, yes, there are several other road projects. The Commissioner of Public Works would have a fit if I did not say it, but yes, we have other road projects. Again, this is just the beginning of the first set of projects we're working on. And I don't have the list of all the others road projects and their location and their route numbers. But the first set of projects that we are working on is what I mentioned in my presentation.
And for the public's information, we did receive a letter from the Department of Public Works that'll be put in as official correspondence. They're asking to be able to do their design and engineering in the CDBGDR funds, and then the construction and mitigation. So some of the projects that they're interested in is the Queen Mary Highway, Hospital Gada, Mafali Road, Belonga Road, Centerline Road, Veterans Drive, and a couple others too as well. So they have officially requested that for the CDBGDR substantial amendment, if we can allocate funds for the architectural engineering portion of the design of their roads and fund it underneath CDBG MIT mitigation.
Good information. Thanks, Mr. Griffith. Going to leave the floor open for about two more minutes for comments, and then we're going to wrap up. I'm back. You went to live. Sheila had another question. She says, there was a need for volunteers' residents for Lutheran social service. Any chance of a building being developed for future need? Antoinette, if you, I think I heard you mention that maybe one of our sub recipients is Lutheran Social Services. Is there anything under there that you'd like to share, that you could share?
Not that Lutheran Service, Social Services is a sub recipient at the moment, but our team is working with Lutheran Services, Social Services to do their capacity assessment.
And that would also fall under our public services and facilities sector.
And it's also depend upon what type of activity they're looking to undertake.
I see in the questions, there's a question from Sharon Cauldron, including a question of capacity assessment procedures. One of the ways to become a sub recipient is to fill out an application. If you go to vihfa.gov and click on disaster recovery, and one of the slides is becoming, one of the tabs is becoming a sub recipient, and you click on that, it will show you the application and also the checklist. It tells you everything that you need to do to become a sub recipient. If you can't find it for any reason, please feel free to call VIHFA's office at 772-4432 or 772- at 772-4432 or 777-4432.
If you don't mind, I can, I can share my screen on our website, Mr. Griffith.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll get that up. I think there was another question in the chat. Is there?
While you're, while you're doing that, I, the other question I see there is says, um, I see two, I think it's Music in Motion, Charlita Schuster. Would like to know when the backroads in Frederickstown will get fixed. Um, I'd like to, uh, one of the, one of the distinctions we, we try to make is the difference between the disaster recovery funds from CDBG and also the FEMA funds. A lot of the roads, the majority of the roads in the territory are actually gonna be fixed by FEMA funds. FEMA represents over $5 billion being brought to the territory. So most of those roads and most of those projects that for, that are directly disaster related in terms of repairing what was storm damage will actually be repaired by FEMA. So that's something we can work with the Office of Disaster Recovery on a later date so that you can, um, know the schedule of the different roads being repaired. But that, that, those roads are not being funded currently by the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. Go ahead, Ms. Muller.
Thanks. Uh, before we get to these sub recipients, I do wanna give you guys a, a, a look at our website and where to find the Action Plan Amendment Number Two and Citizen Participation Plan Update. So we have a banner here on our home screen and if you click Learn More, it will take you to the Action Plan page, overview of what the CDBG DR program is. The amendment number two. The PDF documents are in English and Spanish. It's a full amendment, which is over 200 pages and then the summary.
Uh, Kiva, let them know that the summary is not 200 pages, but the summary is actually a condensed version of the amendment. It is about 30 pages. It just gives you a snapshot of what is in the full document. So if you do not have time to read the entire 200 pages, please feel free to read the, um, executive summary, the substantial amendment executive summary.
Thanks for that, Antoinette. And then if you click on Citizen Participation, it'll take you, this will take you back to the Action Plan page and then the Citizen Participation Plan draft. They're both drafts. And it is here, the full plan and the summary, which is also a condensed version in English and Spanish. Ways that you can provide public comments. Like I said, the public comment period is open from September 3rd to October 3rd. And you can send your comments to CDBGDR@VIHFA.gov. We have our meet today was our last meeting, but I want to announce that we have another one coming up that we're scheduling for next week, Tuesday evening. That is the 29th at 6:00 PM as well. And with this final meeting, we're going to have full Spanish translation for, uh, the Spanish-speaking population as well. So sub recipients can apply here. There's an application, a PDF application to, to become a sub recipient and then you can submit it to us. These are current sub recipients and you can take a look at all of the information there. I hope that helps.
I think it does. That was a good job, Kiva.
Thank you. I'm gonna take it back to our PowerPoint presentation. Any last questions or comments? Cause we're gonna wrap up in a moment.
Thank you. That's my comment. Thank you very much.
Your point one. Thank you. Karen, nothing, Ms. Muller. Um, can we jump into closing comments?
Sure thing. So thank you for your interest and participation. If you didn't have an opportunity to submit your comments or you're watching this at a later time, you can submit them to our email at CDBGDR@VIHFA.gov. Or you can mail them to our office, 100 Lagoon Complex, Suite Number 4, St. Croix. You can mail it to Communication Manager or you can list me, Kiva Muller. Come to me and I'll get those in. Before we close out, I'll have Mr. Griffith wanna make some closing remarks and then we'll dismiss you guys.
Thank you, everyone, for taking time out of the day to listen to this, um, this PowerPoint. One thing I would like everyone to know is that none of these programs are etched in stone. The reason we have the citizens' participation is that your voice really counts. And, and your suggestions and your questions will change and can change the action plan that we submit to HUD. So we asked you to share this presentation. We asked you to take time to go to the website and look at it and email us at CDBGDR@VIHFA.gov or write us a letter or call and give us your comments and your questions and your concerns and also tell us the direction you'd like to see this, this over $1 billion be, um, be used in, in our communities and our, in, in our, in our territory. So thank you for all your attention this evening and we look forward to hearing from you as we, we craft this action plan to submit to the, how the Vision of Housing and Urban Development under the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. Thank you, Ms. Muller.
Thank you. You guys have a great evening. Thank you.
Goodbye, everyone.
Bye.
Good night.
Thank you.